Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, September 11th, and the time is 6:40 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda and to reorganize our subcommittees. So, we haven't been able to do this because we haven't had a full panel quite a while. So, I'm glad everybody's here. Welcome. Woo-oo. So, our committees, I need, um, we need to fill policy, right Ginny? And what's the other? Do we need to do the whole list?
I'm assuming it would probably be the entire list.
Okay, so, we've got, um...
I'm a big fan of budget.
Yeah, I know. So, budget is still Mike and I, because we had, it's been, unless someone feels strongly, the chair's been typically on the budget subcommittee. Liz was on that, and George was on that.
Yes.
Are we, do you want to stay that way?
I'm not opposed. I don't mind, but, uh, policy.
Liz?
Um, sometimes I think I know too much about policy, if that can even be possible. But yeah, that's...
Well, we could ask Trevor. Do you want to sit in on policy?
I'll participate however, wherever I can.
Well, because as one of my colleagues said the other day, you never know when I'm going to get run over by a bus or anyone. Well, let's hope it's not a school. I mean, it's good to be able to get hosedrain, right? Which is exactly what we were talking about.
Right.
I didn't trip it up.
So, Trevor, how do you feel about it?
I have a feeling they talk about hosedrain and finance.
Yeah, I'm more than willing to, I'm not familiar with the overall outlines of it, but I can get up to speed.
So, George has been sitting on it for a while now, and, um, really, when you go over it, just you kind of get to look at the stuff and have some questions, and then you bring it back to this little group anyway.
Okay. Just the warrants, I think there's some...
All right, CES. That's the collaborative. Liz, did you still want to try to be on that?
Oh, um, you know, I think, I'm very excited. They have a meeting next week, the 20th. And they canceled the last two, so I am excited to go to the 20th meeting unless somebody wants to take over CES.
All right, hearing none, Liz.
Collaborative for Educational Services.
I think, I think you've got it.
Oh, good. Alrighty then.
And then we have, what's the other one? Help me out.
Community.
Community and evaluation.
Are they, do we put that together as one or two different ones?
Two different.
Okay. So, community, um, it's trying to get, how do we can engage with the community a little bit better? Do you see who was on that last time, Ginny? Can you see?
I don't think we met all last year.
We didn't meet last time. I don't, I have one...
Last year at all, so I don't remember what, who, what exactly minutes that were...
Community Relations.
Is there a list of duties for that? Like responsibilities?
It did mean evaluation.
Falls under that?
Palate here.
It just, however, the, the subcommittee wants to do it. So, what we were trying to do, the thought behind naming this as a group was, um, to try to come up with some ideas on how to engage the community beyond our school families. Because the school is bigger, bigger than, we're trying to get people to recognize the school is bigger than just the school families.
Yes.
You know, we have, um, you know, we've, we've put a lot out there. We have NHS students that are doing community service. You know, we have all of these different things. And then during budget time, to try to be, come up with ways to help inform the public what the budget looks like and get people excited. It's not really the, quite the right word, but it's the only one coming to mind right now, like, engage with us, ask questions with us, so that it's not such a shock when it goes to town for, and when we're debating it, people have heard it, they've understood it, they've asked questions, seen it, heard it, felt it, lived it real quick.
Right.
So, typically, I would say it's probably more important, um, near budget season. So, it could be sort of like a part-time-ish kind of subcommittee. It doesn't have to be all the way, but it's just a group that can get together, whether it's part of our subcommittee meetings, or if the group wanted to get together separately, you know, at a different time posted meeting, to be able to engage with the community. So, that was the thought about it. We can also decide as a committee that we don't think it's, it's something that we can talk about, um, as a full committee and not have it be a subcommittee.
I think it's important, I'd like to be on that committee.
Okay.
Sounds like an interesting committee, and being new to the board too. I mean, I've got a lot to learn, and, and not being hired, and I don't have kids going here, so I think it'd be a great opportunity to, like you're saying, think out of that box and start thinking about those folks. So, I would like to sit on that.
I'd love that, Trevor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to say with Trevor?
I want to say that next year, when I'm a full-time grandmother. I'll have more time for subcommittees. But I have one, one suggestion, um, because the town, Trevor? The town does have a lot of community events and activities. And if it's possible to set ourselves up with a booth of some kind at those, at least some of the bigger activities, we'd certainly be happy to take a ship staffing that booth, those booths, just to provide some current information to people that come through that wouldn't necessarily be parents.
That's great, because we've done, we've done that in the past. We had a booth or a table at Charter Day.
Yeah.
We had a booth, again, table, tent, whatever, at the Dino Fest. Our former superintendent, Steve Sullivan, really was making it a point to try to get around to a lot of, um, community events. Like, he went to Alliance Club Meeting, he went to a, you know, just trying to, he went to a PTO Meeting, he went to a Booster Club Meeting, just to try to engage with people separately. And then, a lot of the members at the time were duly-hatted. So, I was involved in the Booster Club, so I, you know, I was sort of representing the school committee when I was also doing stuff with the Booster Club, and people would come and ask, ask me different questions and things. So, um, you know, I think it's, I think those are great ideas. We're unfortunately a little late, because I think Dino Fest is this weekend.
It is.
Yeah. It gives us time to plan for the...
For, yeah, for Charter Day.
Yeah, so there are some good ideas out there. Again, attending, if, if in the meantime, before some recommendations come forward, Mary Jane, Jen, if there's something, Todd, if there's something that comes up where you would like to have a representative there, and I'm, my nights are free, if my nights are free is what I meant to say, I'd be happy to, to do that. Because the more I'm out and about in community activities, the more I get to know about the community of Granby. So, I don't, I'm happy to do that. If there's, just let me know ahead of time, and I can schedule you in my calendar before anyone else grabs a date.
So, would you like to be on that committee then, Liz?
Uh, I'd like to be on that committee after the first of the year.
Okay.
Or, but I, I can't do it now.
Okay. Well, I'll be on it with you, Trevor.
Thank you.
And then Evaluation.
I think that was June and June was the last time.
Yeah, George, do you want to sit back on that still?
Sure.
Anyone like to join? Join George. I see that three times back.
So, the Evaluation Committee probably meets, what, three or four times a year?
Yep. And it's usually part of one of our meetings here. It's just, we have, we have, usually, one of the meetings in a month is a subcommittee meeting, so we'll do the agenda, and then break for the subcommittees, and then rejoin, and then finish our meeting.
And just to be clear, this is about working with the superintendent on, in the beginning of the school year, because it's already happened, so this wouldn't be till next school year, talking about developing goals, what they are, creating a tool, how, you know, what parts of the tool align with the goals, right?
Yep.
And then deciding on evidence as, well, maybe meeting halfway through the year with the school, full school committee, but deciding on evidence that the committee will get to support those goals. It's really not, I'd do that.
Okay, great.
Knowing that we won't have to do much there until after the first of the year.
Okay. All right, perfect. So, to recap, budget is Mike and I, policy's Trevor and George, CES is Liz, Community Relations is Trevor and I, and Evaluation is George and Liz. Next up is to vote on meeting minutes from August 5th. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes from the 5th? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to accept August 5th, excuse me, to accept the August 5th minutes as written.
Excellent. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Approve unanimously. Next is warrants 83, 84, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 16. Those are going around for signature.
Oh, Jen, I have one, could I ask you one question before I sign these and pass them on to Trevor? For tonight, I think I should, I hadn't thought about this before, so shame on me. But I did see a CES bill in this one, not even sure if I'd seen it before. I don't know the answer to this question, as to whether or not I should abstain on the warrants that include CES bills. So, for tonight, I'm going to skip signing that one.
That's fine. Why would you think you have to abstain?
I, you know, because this question's never been asked before, but as a school committee member, paying bills, I know the school committee decides that they're going to join this committee. I'm just unclear with regards to ethics, whether or not it's allowable to sign the warrant. I really don't know the answer to that question, and neither did any of my colleagues.
I, I'm not following why it would be a problem.
Uh, because anytime you're a member of an elected board, and you deal financially with any other institution, or company, or vendor that you have some relationship with, in this instance, being on the Board of Directors for CES...
Okay, that's the part, they should have led with that.
Sorry. I'm sorry. You should abstain. So, I just, ethics may say, well, you're part of the collaborative, it's okay, but since I'm unclear, and...
That's fine.
I recall the Ethics Commission. Yeah, I've got that.
I just didn't, I actually was looking at the warrants.
I thought you were saying we shouldn't be signing it, so I was confused.
No, no, not me.
The piece of information about being on the Board of Directors is hugely important.
So, it's just 10 I'm going to abstain on tonight.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 83, 84, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 16, acknowledging Liz's abstention from 10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining from warrant.
10, which is how George made the motion, so I think...
I know.
Okay. For the record, we've got...
For the record.
All right. Visitor's comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address, so that this information can be included in the record for this, for the meeting. No visitors. Moving right along. Student representative, Brenna's not here. Next, new business. After-school program for kindergarteners.
Our high, our, I'm going to talk about this because our new elementary principal, Cindy Sykes, is interested in creating a program for after-school program, and before school for kindergarteners. Right now, it's just offered to the Juicy Grade Program, 1 through 6. So, we've had some need that we're looking for the parents. So, she's surveying them right now to see who's interested. Looks like there's quite a bit of interest garnered, and, which will include a fee, but we kind of came up with an obstacle that, I guess Mr. Dormer explained it to us, but I didn't really understand the reality until we put the numbers together. When we vote for our budget, automatically, we, we are allocated $20,000 for preschool programs. But if we create this kindergarten program, it'll be out, it'll be more than the $20,000 that's allocated, even though it's fee-based. So, when we go to town meeting next spring, we have to increase that funding so that we're able to create this program, to stay within the parameters.
So, we can't do it now?
Unless there's a special town meeting.
Special town meeting, and it becomes an article on that.
Okay.
So, annually, there's a cap on the spending out of that revolving account of $20,000. I reached out to the previous business manager, trying to find out where, just a little bit about it. It would bend that same amount for as long as he had been in that role. And it, because we had discussed, because it's unusual, when we compare it to our other revolving accounts, there isn't a cap on athletic revolving spending, food service revolving, those things, but this particular one has a cap, and I'm not sure of the origin. I wasn't able...
Was it because it used to be a grant?
I'm, I don't know. I asked David, Mr. Scavets, he's been, you know, attending these meetings a lot longer than I have. He, he's not aware of the origin of it either. But we know that in order to, when we calculated out the cost of a kindergarten after school, that, um, the number of hours and the potential salary for coverage, it was going to exceed the $20,000 plus the existing before-school program. So, we can put that forward, either at a special town meeting, if one is scheduled, to increase that, or we would anticipate doing that for the following fiscal year. Again, it is not an allocation from the town, it is, it is everything that is revolving, it's generated, it's self-sustained. It's not additional funds for the town. Last year, we spent, so last fiscal year, it was around $13,000 that was spent between the summer enrichment program and the before-school program. The after-school program, I don't have my figures in front of me, but I believe it was another 12 or 15...
You said 12, yeah.
$12,000 on top of what we are currently spending. So, that increase would have to be authorized by the town.
Okay.
I did, I did talk to Tammy, the town administrator, and she, you know, I said, because it is self-generated, is there something we can do? She said, basically, because we voted for it, at that amount, we have to keep it at that amount. She's also going to reach out to, to the attorneys to see if they can, if there's some other thing that we can do. But there is a need, so I just want to let the families know that it's something we're looking at, and we're hoping to get it up and running. Um, you know, if we wait till January, you know, we could probably get it to, to meet the parameters, but by that time, people have their daycare, and their, and their morning before-school, after-school program is taken care of. You know, we figured it at, what, $9 an hour, which is much cheaper than they would have at Children's First, where people tend to go. So, we have it all worked out, we just have to fix that, that amendment when it comes to the town meeting.
All right.
So, she's not here to present that anyway, after we decided we couldn't do it.
All right. Next is payment of invoice from FY '25.
So, I put a copy of the invoice in the folder. It is for $180 that was materially used to repair some of the damage from the firefighting equipment when the outfield of the junior varsity baseball field caught fire last spring. The vendor did not send the invoice until August, so it had missed the cutoff for the FY '25. It's going to come from athletic revolving as part of our field maintenance, so...
Awesome. All right. So, we need to have a vote. Can I, any, well, first, any further discussion on that?
I heard that Rocket Club's going to have the fire department when they fire off the rockets this year.
Should definitely have a note fired. Maybe identify a better location, but the grass in the spring was very green in that section, so, I don't know, some other areas could use some support.
We're kidding.
Yeah, no, that's not, it's not an actual facilities plan.
We're going to have L to pay, and there's another problem. Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Oh, boy.
Make a motion for payment of invoice from fiscal year '25 for grass damage.
Can I have a second?
Go ahead, George.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next is a check authorization for East Meadow Activities Account.
Um, so, with the retirement of Ms. Dejolay, we'd like to have Mrs. Sykes authorized to be a check signer for the student activities, and there is also another staff member who will be the co-manager of the accounts. That's, uh, this is Nick Leary. So, we would need authorization from the board, and then the town treasurer will go through the process to have them be able to sign checks for student activities for the East Meadow School.
Is it usual to have a secondary person?
Yes. All checks, all, all checks are signed by two people.
Excellent. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to authorize, to signers for checks for the student activities account at East Meadow School, Ms. Sykes, the principal, and Ms. Nick Leary.
Correct.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
All right. Now, I'm not sure it says continuing business NA, so I think we're just moving on, and then we're going to adjourn to subcommittees, policy, and budget. So, for tonight, since it's Trevor and George, and Liz, you were on it previously, I think three of you can do it, as long as you don't make any discussions, because you're technically quorum.
Am I still on policy?
Well, I thought you might, since you guys were, have worked on the last part.
Yes.
So, I didn't know if you wanted to sit with them.
Oh, I see. I get it. All right, but he's officially part of the subcommittee now.
Yes.
Okay.
And you are not, but the three of you together constitute...
I'm not.
It's George and Trevor.
Of policy.
Okay. You may sit wherever you'd like. I just thought you would, since you had worked on the last part for policy, that you might want to, and kind of walk Trevor through it.
I thought I missed something, because I thought I said I'd stay on policy, but that's fine. I am, you're...
You would be on policy. The three of you sat together, it would be a quorum.
Of the school committee? Oh, duh. Sometimes...
I'm, you're making, I'm very confused.
You got it right, I got it wrong. Thank you.
We're good.
Got it?
Yes.
So glad everyone else is good.
You're good. You got it right. I got it wrong.
Okay, so, policy and budget, just, the three of you may have discussions, you just can't vote on anything until you bring it, uh, bring it forward. You guys can adjourn to wherever, we'll have a budget conversation. How long do you think you need?
I don't think we need very long at this point.
Okay. Um, do you guys want to just do like 10, 10 or 15 minutes? Just kind of...
Probably be more of a recenter and...
Yeah, recenter.
Fix down here for...
Sure, we can, we can, we can do that. Sectionees ready? I can get more sections ready for the, I actually, I'm not as good as I should be about going in the drive, but I did see you shared all the other sections.
But now you're not going to be on Policy Committee. It's George and Trevor.
Because it's...
We can only have, we can only have two.
I still, I get it.
So, if someone, if, it sounds like maybe Liz wants to be, um...
And I can... I thought, what I was hearing, and I don't care, because, Trevor, if you really want to be on...
Oh, no, I, I...
I want you to be on, but I thought you said he'd sit in on it and get up to speed. Was I wrong here?
I was assuming I was getting onto the committee completely.
Good.
But again, I'm totally fine. I can, I can sit in with them and just be quiet, or...
Okay.
No, 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 no.
That's fine. So, I'm going to, I'm just going to adjust, so we're going to maintain policy for Liz and George, and Trevor, you can sit in with them and kind of get a feel for it, because we do have you on Community Relations, so we'll make sure that we meet for that at another time. All right, so, 15 minutes, okay?
Yeah.
You really got me with the quorum thing, and you're so totally right, and I was so totally wrong. Thank you. My question would be this. I appreciate having the opportunity to sit in on either subcommittee that I'd like to just hear about without discussing anything. Is there, um, so, what I've been doing is what I typically do with any committee that contracts with MASC to do policy, and that's comparing current with model, and having discussion about the differences in what the subcommittee wants to do. Now, at some time in the future, you all could decide if you wanted me to still do that, and then send it out to the subcommittee, and they could discuss the changes, or if I should just stay all the way out of it. Because it's just a matter of, here's what you have, here's what MASC has, here's the differences, and here's why. But if, um, think about that. I'd have to think about that myself, and whether I even could. But I'm happy to do that pre-work, just because for me, it's like...
I think you guys can decide that in your group, how you want that to do. But mostly, I just want to know, are we good with 15 minutes?
Yeah.
All right. So, let's break for 15 minutes. Yep, we'll have a budget discussion, and you guys can organize yourselves for policy, and then we'll be back here in 15 minutes, or less. All right, we're taking a break, Rover. And we're back. Uh, policy, why don't you give us a report on?
Um, basically, we did more of like an introduction for Trevor, an overview of what the policy's subcommittee does, and kind of the flow of it. I think we kind of came to the decision, more or less, that Trevor and I will be on the subcommittee, and Liz will take a step back on that for now. She has offered, if we need assistance with it, she can do like preemptively set things up that make it a little bit easier for us. But right now, at least until she retires and has more free time, we'll probably try and not lean on that too much.
Sweet. Any questions for the Policy Room? All right. Budget?
Uh, budget. Uh, we discussed the, uh, the storm last weekend, and some of the effects that it had on the grounds and buildings. A little bit of drainage issues that have been repaired. Nothing serious. We are overall very lucky to get through that with limited to no damage. Nothing that would affect the bottom line in any substantial manner. It's early in the year, so our funds are not critically depleted, not on wood. So, yeah, we're just rolling along. Everything's still in the green for now.
All right. Any questions for budget? All right, moving right along. Superintendent's report.
We haven't met since school started, so I just want to let you know that we started school in the 25th and the 26th, so teachers came in and did some PD, including learning our new Teacher E's program. We left Rediker, so now we are using Teacher E, which is a cloud-based system, so teachers had some training for that. Roll over went fairly smoothly. There was, of course, some hiccups over the summer trying to export some of the data from parents, but we, we're getting there, you know, some hiccups. So, just want to let the families know that they will not be getting Black or Connect messages anymore that are coming from Teacher E's. I'm going to be sending my first message out tomorrow, so I want to make sure it works, and we don't wait till snow day to find out that, you know, it's, so you'll all be getting something. I'm not sure what it's going to sound like or what it looks like yet, but we'll talk about, which will be just announcing that we have, uh, open houses and stuff, so I just want to let you know that beginning of something tomorrow. So, teachers also learned, additional topics were, uh, illustrious math, modern classrooms, and the teach-down curriculum we had talked about before. At the high school summit, I don't have this in here, but teachers also worked on curriculum alignment and curriculum mapping, which really brings us to the next area. Because of the MCAS, we talked a little bit about this in the past, we have to come up with a new graduation requirement, and we are required by DESI to submit something to DESI by December 31st. And within that determination, we have to do two things. In 9th and 10th grade, the students have to show competency in subject matter. So, what does that look like? That looks like, it could be a capstone project, it could be final exams or midterm exams, it could be, um, uh, project-based learning assessments, whatever it looks like. So, we have to, we were working on that this year to get that going. And then, 11th and 12th grade, you have to do the rest of your English and math, so we really have to break that down. So, we're going to be spending a lot of time getting that ready to submit to the state. So, I gave you kind of an outline of what it looks like. I'm not going to read it, but it is in your notes. So, we'll be coming with you probably in mid-November to review that, and so that we can get it into the state by December 31st. So, we're working on it now. Teachers are working on the curriculum, because one of the things we have to do is show how our curriculum matches our projects, so we're, that's a lot of PD that teachers at the Junior Senior High are going to be doing this year.
I have a question about the MCAS thing, and it just made me think of it, so, if we're, will they still be taking MCAS?
They still take the MCAS, because...
So, will John and Abigail Adams still be a thing?
Yep. That's what that's, that's specifically what a lot of the MCAS is for. I don't know, you know, for students who want to excel, I think it'll be great, but other students, you know, we, I do worry that, you know, how serious are they going to take it if they're not college bound or whatever, to use it as data, so, but you still have the... But you still have the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and they will still be using that data.
Great.
So a happy report that we also, we received, I applied for the Safe and Support of Schools grant in the amount of $10,000. We just got that, reported out that we're getting that again this year. And we're going to be using that to the elementary school to offer multi-tier systems of support, specifically trying to collect data on students and creating an action plan to support our students. We are trying to make sure that we get the students interventions early so that we can maybe create opportunities so that we don't have students on, you know, IEPs and things. So we need to get the tier-one instruction in a little bit sooner so that we can help the teachers and the students social-emotional web leading so that we can keep them off of, you know, some of the play that they may need in the future. So we do have that. And Cindy, our new principal, is really adept in that, so she's starting to work on that with the elementary teachers, and she's been doing that after-school faculty meetings and half-times. I met with our new commissioner at two separate occasions. At both meetings, he discussed a vision for supporting students through career pathways programs. He stressed that Massachusetts is doing a good job with our students, but he'd like to see many of our high school students leaving with associate's degree. So even though, you know, he talks about AP tests, he really would like to see more students transitioning to colleges because you get more for the students doing that. So he's really looking for that, which is really what I'd like to do as well. I'm actually meeting with the Elms College president next week to talk about creating some sort of education program for our Catholic, for our students, because we have a lot of students at the high school coming over here to help out, so I felt maybe we could look at that and explore that a little bit. So I'm working with her. But we do have students taking classes at Elms right now, but not in education, but meeting with the education department in particular. I reached out to STCC and HCC, but I've yet to have an answer from them. So that is really what we're looking at. So I'm really interested in strengthening our partnerships and collaborating, really having more opportunities for our students, especially, you know, in these times of budgetary crisis, if we can get our students to do more dual enrollment, that might alleviate some of our issues of retracting other students, so that's something that's on our radar. On Monday, September 15th, we talked a little bit about this. We're invited to join a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the future of the high school, so DESI will be there, will be joining us virtually. We also were awarded the World Language Grant again for the third year in a row, so we've worked with Hadley, Hatfield, and Amherst. And this grant allows us to pay for the SEAL by Literacy test for our students. And when they graduate from high school, that gives them that certification that they're literate in two languages, whatever it may be, Spanish, Korean, whatever the student chooses to take the test in. I sent, there is a flyer in your folder that the Granby Cultural Center has asked to use our facilities on September 27th to unveil an art project that they gave a grant to. So they're going to be here on the 27th and they're going to bring some food trucks in. And we have some students who may be putting some art work out. We're still working the details on that right now. It's a little early in the year for our students, have a lot of things to be putting out, but we're looking at it. I also put information out to the staff because the Culture Council has about $7,500 in grants, money that they'd like to disburse to the community, so if they're interested in that, the teachers can put in a proposal and they may be able to utilize some funding for something they want in the classrooms. So we've done that as well. And then just a couple reminders, we'll be having open house at the high school on the 18th, and then open house at the elementary school will be from 5:30 to 7:00 on the 25th. And that's all that I have right now. Any questions?
The board meeting is on the 15th. Is that a limited number of people, so we don't have forum, or is everybody invited?
I don't.
September 15?
Yes, Monday. I believe it's just.
See, posted, so it's probably not an open public meeting. It's not posted on our website as a meeting.
I really don't know. I just know that Kathy asked if Mary Dana and I were going to be there. Were you planning on going?
I have a game.
So that's a no.
That's probably, that's we don't have a forum, I think.
So we'll keep it light?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for Mary Dana?
Did you have any questions?
No, I might have asked that question.
So if it's not a public meeting, then it's by invite, right? And if it is a public meeting, anybody can sit in the audience and attend like any other member of the public would do and not participate in the discussion.
Is it during the select board meeting that you guys are meeting, or?
Is that, we've been asked to be there for 5:30.
Oh, so it's before the select board, then?
I'd love to say I love the collaboration and finding a way to do that with our surrounding communities to help the kids, and that SEAL by Literacy is still relatively new, but it's really a very cool thing for kids to get, so thank you for that.
We had one student get it last year, and I think we have a student that already has it that took the test for this year. So we did have two pass.
And I think that's all I want to say, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have to give a shout-out to both schools. I've heard from a lot of the kids that the new integration to both buildings has been wonderful. The wacky blow-up arms on the first day, everybody came home very excited about it, and then I guess there was a Dunkin' Donuts truck this week that everybody's all fired up about, so, you know, both buildings, both sets of, everybody's doing a wonderful job.
Really, I'm trying to work on mental health for the staff and the students. Really, that is my goal this year, you know. They matter, and that's really what I started my year off with them at Convocation, that you matter, and, you know, we're here to support each other. And I really want to have a year of celebration because it's going to be an uphill battle for the next few years. We really need to let them know that they're appreciated and whether we keep visiting, and Todd's out all the time visiting the classrooms, and we're listening to the, you know, the custodians, and we're listening to what everybody has to say. So really, that is what we're trying to do this year, really make it a gratitude year, basically. That's kind of how I'm hoping.
I love it.
Well done off the starting block. Nothing but good things that I've heard from people, so, yeah.
All right. Todd, you're up.
I don't have a lot to report out. I did get an update from the technology department and the maintenance department from our lightning event in the summer. The facilities were most impacted in this building. We're still working with the company that manages or the equipment that runs the HVAC systems in the building. So as I said in our last, my last update on this, we're in a kind of default mode, so everything is operating, but we have limited setting control. We're looking over the next couple of weeks to have them come in. They were waiting on parts to be able to replace the electronics side. There is the key FOB system that both buildings use, that still we're waiting on parts for that. So some of our new employees, we aren't able to issue them FOBs yet. It certainly is an inconvenience, but we're working through that. The other systems, everything is coming back online from that. The insurance company has made its initial disbursement to the town, so we'll be using that to cover the majority of the costs. There's like every insurance policy, there is a deductible, about $2,500. The initial disbursement was over $60,000 for the damage that was done. So a few things, but everything is magnified, you know, with how much the technology is integrated into the buildings. Kitchen update, major construction is completed. The building commissioner for Granby has signed off on the final inspection. We are waiting on a couple of punch list items. There is a duct that needs to be resized. It was, the wrong size was put in, so it's having, there's quite a bit of noise that would impact construction in the weight room, so I'm looking to get that done. There is a professional cleaning crew that started in the kitchen today. They're going to be working tomorrow and through Tuesday of next week. The kitchen has been idle for five years. The equipment's been idle. I wanted as thorough a cleaning before we start preparing food in there. I sent a message to the Board of Health with the plans and the signed-off, the building permit by the commissioner, building commissioner, so I'm waiting to hear back if they're looking to do any kind of final sign-off before we can start preparing food in there. We are transitioning to a new accounting software on both the town and school side. The system we had used was developed in the 1980s. It is coming to the end of its run. The sole proprietor of that is retiring, and so it is phased out. He's graciously extended it for the first few months of the fiscal year because the transition has been very difficult going from the systems that we had to what are more contemporary. And so in that, I have not provided yet the kind of monthly update format because we're not fully integrated yet, and so for me to draw and compile the data, we're just still working through those systems. So that's what I have.
Any questions for Todd? And CES, Liz, you already mentioned that there's a meeting next week?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So anything for our next meeting? Speaking of which, our next meeting is scheduled for the 20th second, I believe, and I've just gotten a promotion at work, and so I'll be on travel for that week. And then there's a week in October that I'll be on travel, but I don't, it will be that same week. So this is unusual for me, but I don't know if you all want to still have the meeting on the 23rd, or if you want to push it off a week when I can be here.
Which would you prefer?
I would love to be here, but I don't know. I hate messing up everyone's schedules. Could we do it on the 30th?
Definitely, it's the next week.
And then we'd have two in a row, the 30th and the 7th?
I probably couldn't do it on the 30th. It's my daughter's 12, so.
Oh, yeah, I hear you. So we don't have to decide right now. We can think about it, but right now, we'll leave it as-is as long as you're cool with running it?
Yeah, we're all.
All right, perfect.
It really has to suffer through me fumbling over it.
You'll be just fine, I'm sure.
Sure.
All right. So we'll do that. Anything that we want to make sure is on the agenda for next time? Hearing nothing, we will now, school committee will now vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part A3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The school committee will not return to open session. Can you do a little call vote, please?
Can I ask one question? So this is just generally non-union, not specific positions?
I don't, you know as much as I do.
Oh, I don't know anything. Okay. If it's, I mean, because it is a specific position, we should name that going in, but if it's just overall strategy, then we don't name it. It's overall strategy.
I think it's overall strategy, that's it.
Mr. Argusino.
Aye.
Ms. Lo, yes. Mr. Goffey.
Aye.
Mr. Ger.
Aye.
And Ms. Bartosz.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.